This is called to order the town of East Hampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, regular meeting, a work session for September 10th, 2019. And just for the public, there was another scheduled meeting at the town hall. So we're in the Baker Room today in this cute little room of ours that we're using temporarily. So with that, we will begin the work session, and I think we have some extension of time requests, starting with Megron Realty.
Well, I want you to file. These are two I want you to make a decision on.
Okay.
And Terry, I think, is ready to present this board. But here's the file.
Is it a Montauk?
It's a Montauk one, yeah. This one goes back to 2006. And it's one of these, it's for a business in Montauk. The owner is Megron Realty LLC. But actually, the property right now, the space is being used by the Yofro Yogurt Business that's at the premises now. So this was back like to 2006, and it was for parking spaces. They were supposed to provide four on the property itself. And then in the determination from 2006, it shows that the planning board was recommending that they be allowed to put three spaces in the town right of way, in front of the property, two of those be in regular spaces and one being an ADA compliant space. And since that time, like, nothing has really happened. A building appeared. I know, we checked into it, there was no permit that we found for this property at all. And I talked to Eric Schantz about it, but he's kind of, he doesn't understand why there would be no permit. But anyway, somewhere along the way, around 2010, a building appeared. And like I said, it's now the yogurt property. But I took a couple of pictures. This is next door, the yogurt place is next door to Muse Restaurant in Montauk. And what bothers me here is that they, four of the parking spots, according to Eric, would have been put back in an alleyway. You know how Montauk has the alleyways in the back of the stores and things? But they clearly have this labeled "no parking." So there's been no parking spaces provided, whether it's the ones in the right of way or any other. And it looks like that alleyway's been used for other things, similar to some other businesses that we've had in the past.
And this is an extension of time?
This is an extension of time from 2006.
But it says here they're hoping to get a building permit this fall.
That's what it said last year, too. Actually, last year, we did approve it. It bothered me last year, but here we are again, and they still have done nothing.
Well, what if we give them like a deadline to get the building permit?
Well, they do have a deadline.
They, yeah, Eric doesn't understand why a building permit did not show up in the file at all for this. He went and I think he talked to the building department and all that stuff.
Yes. And I contacted Katie Ozicki, who's representing the application, and she said they're going to get one next month, the building permit. That was what she told me.
Well, do you want to give them three months to get a building permit?
Yeah, I mean, I'm reluctant to give it. And I am also concerned that they haven't provided the parking on the premises. So I don't know if this is an enforcement thing also that should be addressed.
Conditioning the approval on complying with the prior order requiring for...
The 2006 determination.
The 2006 determination. So they get three months and a condition of complying with it.
I don't know that I think they're going to do anything.
It seems a little unreasonable that they haven't complied with it at this point.
Yeah. I mean, I was actually looking to deny it, or do we give it to enforcement? Because the other part that is not in front of us also didn't get done.
What was the nature of the approval?
It's attached in there. I mean, our piece of it on the approval for 2006, I think they want to put the building in.
Is it a new building they're putting up?
You see the yogurt place? No, it was a new building at one time, because in 2006 and on the aerials, nothing appeared on the premises until about 2010.
They built a whole building without any permits? That doesn't make sense.
That's, well, that's what doesn't make sense to Eric also, but he couldn't find a permit when he searched for it.
And that wasn't what they were giving approval for. What was their project?
The purpose of the application was to locate three of the seven required parking spaces off-site in the South Euclid Avenue right of way.
But what does, I mean, does it say that there's an empty building?
It is.
Like in the findings?
It's, the applicant was really submitted to the planning board to construct 2,200 square foot commercial building in downtown Montauk. Seven parking spaces are proposed. All seven could not fit. So, but to construct a 2,200 square foot commercial building, was that built after this determination?
After 2006. It was built sometime after 2006.
So there can't be a C of O on it then? Why, what's the building permit for? Is it a building?
There was no permit.
Well, they would need a, they would have needed a building permit to build the building.
Yeah. That's what...
That, can I just...
So what are we approving?
We were only approving the parking in the town right of way.
So they must have went to site plan and they needed a variance for the parking because they couldn't meet the parking.
Right.
Right, so they, so...
So you're extending your approval for the parking.
That's what I meant.
Just your variance.
So then the cover letter request doesn't sound right.
My question is, if there's a building that's been constructed as a result of a 2006 planning board application...
Right.
Why isn't it, then, is there a C of O? And did they get a C of O without complying with the building, with the parking spaces?
Apparently Eric couldn't even find a building permit for the building.
And I checked with the building.
I know. So I think we have to table this until we know these things. That's what I would recommend.
Well, we can table it and do it. I just wanted to bring it up because it's highly unusual. I don't want to just rub the stamp of approval.
I think, I think we put the onus on the agent to approve.
Can I ask you a question? Because I do see the cover letter, but maybe the cover letter, if we, the zoning board, had granted a variance with respect to the parking, then the cover letter should be asking for an extension of time only for that and nothing else.
But there's still the issue of whether or not the building was constructed...
Well, that's a whole nother issue.
And whether or not it has a C of O. And if they're operating without a C of O, because they haven't complied with parking, how'd they get the C of O if there is one?
Yeah, they haven't complied with the parking. You can see they even roped off. They have the no parking, they roped off where the spaces should be, according to Eric, I guess this is common in Montauk with the alleyways in the back, but kind of like...
I think we...
So this building was proposed in 2000?
Yeah. And it seems to have appeared on the overheads, the GIS, somewhere around 2010.
Proposed for...
Now, he had put some photos and some GIS things on the smart board for me.
It has to be a building.
But, because we don't have a smart board tonight.
Yeah, surely there is one.
Well, what's Katie Ozicki's cover letter again? Where is that?
It just says that they want to get a building permit this fall.
Right.
For what?
I don't know.
That's what I was saying.
It could be for the building, right?
Maybe you could call her and find out exactly what's going on with the parking and the building.
To get a building permit or to close out a building permit?
It says, "The owner of Megron Realty would like to obtain an extension of time for the, at the above referenced parcel. They are hoping to get a building permit this fall."
So they got the parking before they got the building?
No.
No, the building's there.
The building's...
Parking was, the parking was a variance as a result of the planning, the planning board's...
On the whole project, so there was a whole project. It was before the planning board. As part of the site plan review, they couldn't meet the parking requirements. So they had to come to the zoning board to get the parking requirements in order to comply with the town code. So they got their variance for the parking requirements, then they would have gotten their site plan approval from the planning board. Then it appears that they built the building, but we can't at this point see or find, or Eric has said he doesn't have a building permit for that specific building. When they, when the zoning board granted these variances for parking, there was no building at the time. It's proposed. You can see it on the survey. It says, "Proposed two-story commercial building, first floor and second floor."
Just going to ask another question. If the building permit is granted, is that going to include the parking spaces?
Yes.
Which is kind of...
They can't, they can't get a C of O without...
But the zoning, so the zoning board, there's a requirement, oh no, technically it doesn't have to actually, because the requirement in your approval, the reason why they're asking you is because you have a requirement that they shall apply for a building permit no more than 12 months from the date of filing this determination. If they're going to, if they're seeking, maybe she meant C of O.
Do you want me to contact her? Should I contact her?
No, 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 no. But maybe she meant C of O.
So that's, we need clarification on it.
She didn't say...
Because...
I don't think we should waste any more time.
No, we can let you figure it out.
Yeah, and let's, yeah, we're going to have to come back to it.
So do you want me to do anything on it?
Nope.
No.
All right, I'll take them.
Yeah.
Thank you for your pictures, Terry.
Okay, so the next one is MYSTL LLC and the Nature Conservancy.
Okay. I just brought this before you because it is a walkway. I know you're strict about these. This is the explanation as to what's happening. I did prepare a resolution in case you said yes right now. I have three others, too, that go right to the end, but...
But this is, what's the date of, what's the date of this?
The original date was December 24th, 2014. And you approved an 848 linear foot of 14...
Let me just read the description. "The town building department issued a building permit on July 13th, 2015, and the approved grade walkway has been constructed to the SEHA line. And New York State DEC application for an at-grade walkway is pending in order to complete the walkway in SEHA's jurisdiction." Okay. NY, the New York State DEC staff has taken the position that they will only approve elevated walkways. Here we go. In SEHA jurisdiction, which is adverse to town policy. "We have been working with and are continuing to work with New York State DEC staff and council in an attempt to reach compromise. In this regard, we are seeking to renew the natural resources special permit issued per ZVA..." I think we have to grant it.
Yep.
Yeah. So I will, I just wanted to add to your attention before...
This is...
That's me, so you want me to make a motion?
Well, I'll prepare a resolution.
Oh, okay, all right.
I have three others that are standard for the end of the meeting, but these were two I wanted to just make a...
Just gives a text map number.
Yeah, this, it went through the Nature Conservancy court.
Right.
Yes.
Oh, 2014. I wouldn't remember it.
Thank you.
Next, we have possible administrative applications. Number, we have 18 Association Road LLC. And Michael?
So 18 Association Road is over in Wayneska on Georgica. So the wetlands parcel to the north. What they have currently is a pool house and a pool that's kind of oriented north-south. What they want to do is they're going to switch it so it's a pool east-west with a proposed pool house that's 156 square feet, so it's under the cap, meets the 100-foot mark, and also a lounge that's open on four sides. All of it is over 100 feet away. And they're also going to be abandoning, they have currently two septic systems on the parcel that they're going to be putting in the IA. The IA is about 154 feet away. And then a lot of the other work, including this enclosed porch area here, the majority of it is outside of 150 feet from the wetlands. And then they're adding a second story deck and a cellar entryway.
That is jurisdiction?
These two are in, but they meet the 100-foot.
Okay.
They've kind of, the 100-foot mark pretty much goes right along that, you know, kind of where their improvements are on the lot. So it's all relatively minor.
What's the address again?
18 Association Road.
Oh. That's interesting, because we have 17 Association Road tonight, too.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, you too. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. You want to make a...
Well, we need a motion from John.
Do we have the text map number on it?
We have it in...
Three, here it is.
Here it is.
You have the detailed information.
Yep, I got it.
In the matter of 18 Associat, oops, sorry. In the matter of 18 Association Road LLC, text map number 300-200-03-18. I make a motion to approve their request to proceed administratively. Second?
Concur.
Concur.
Okay. Next, we have Swominen. Is that right? Swominen or Swominen?
Sure.
At 215 South Essex Street. Description to replace and extend an existing deck and to construct a 32-square-foot outdoor shower within 150-foot of freshwater wetlands.
All right. So this one here, as the chairman pointed out, so this is the existing one-story deck. They're going to be extending it away from the wetlands on the upland side and also adding in an outdoor shower. At the closest point, I believe it's 116 to the wetlands.
Where's north? Oh, so they're doing this on the south side?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So I did drive by and there was a big drop-off on the north side of the property.
Yeah, and that's where the wetlands are, that's where the stream is, right along there. So they're doing everything on the upland side of the parcel.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, no, they'll have to put a drywall in for the shower.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Yep, I'm good with it.
Need text map number?
Oh, I'm like that.
In the matter of Suminin, text map 300-028-01-31.1 at 2215 South Essex Street in Montauk, and make a motion to allow this project to be, to move administratively.
Second?
Concur.
Concur.
Copy.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Thanks.
You have one?
I do.
All right, we'll move on to board decisions. And board, are we ready to discuss Stonefire?
Yes.
Now, Stonefire is the one that...
I'll read it in, I will read it in, yeah.
Would you like to file?
It's the one we got open letter today, John.
And the notice is right on the agenda, Roy.
Yeah, I know that, I read it. I just want to pull out my notes. Okay. Okay. And the size and location is 25,506 square feet at 54 Firestone Road, Montauk, text map number 300-017-01-01. The description, "To allow the roof on an existing residence to be reconstructed in a different configuration. An approximately 250-square-foot deck to remain an existing 96-square-foot deck to be reconstructed within jurisdiction and minimum setbacks of freshwater wetlands." The relief sought one variance and a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-420. The town of East Hampton town code are required for this application. One variance is 77 feet from 255-430 of the town code is required to allow decking to remain 23 from freshwater wetlands where 100-foot setback is required and any other relief necessary. Zoning district is a resident zone X flood zone and the secret class is type two. Ready?
Okay, I have a question from the best record desk. The letter that we received, or that you distributed today, it ends with, "Further, applicant is researching feasibility and costs associated with the installation of an IA septic system and what if any grants are available? We hope to have the feasibility determined within three to four weeks so that a determination can be made as to the feasibility of a such system. We will advise the board as soon as we have sufficient information to make the decision." So...
Sounds like a request for additional time.
Well, they originally asked for 60 days.
Can I just comment that I called the agent's representative today to ask that question?
Oh, okay.
And the information I got was that the engineer had looked at the available locations for an IA system and is concerned that they are not going to be able to fit it in here without impacting the neighbor's wells. And apparently, there's a, there's a certain distance that you have to be if you're installing one of those systems to any well. And the engineer does not believe that they can, without going through a fairly involved variance process with whoever it is, to, to get that approved, that they would be able to, to do that. He also referenced that there is some move afoot on this road to put in public water. And should that occur, that would remove the whole issue of the wells. But at this point, they're sort of at a stop on that situation.
One of the reasons I was asking is, it didn't seem like from our discussion that we had made a requirement, that we just asked them to look into it, right?
Well, here's the issue, here's the issue...
It should have been a discussion.
But here's the issue that I had with it, because they had undergone a pretty substantial renovation of the house without the benefit of a building permit.
Right, right.
If they had done it with the benefit of the building permit, it would have most likely kicked in a new septic system. So I think that's an important aspect of our decision from my perspective.
And I guess the other...
Yeah, you were very vocal at the...
And not only that, but they also skirted, if you will, the, the energy code. If, because they were replacing windows.
Yeah.
And they changed roofline.
And they changed roof.
And so that would have kicked in the new energy code.
Well, one of the contingencies we made is, and he accepted, but I don't see it in the letter, is they would covenant that future improvements would preclude the deck from becoming living space and they'd be precluded from extending the roof.
Well, he, he says in item C that he, as applicant, will covenant not to enclose the decking on the wetland side of the property. However, I think that we had a more general thing, not just not enclose the decking, but also not do anything further work on that side of the house, above the deck either, second floor. And I was going to bring that up.
And maybe to Roy's point, we make it, we ask that they come up to code with the new meeting requirement.
Well, we haven't, we don't even know if we're approving this.
It's a big ask. I would rather see a mitigation of the overcleared wetlands, you know, the, in the wetlands down below then. Because I don't see, if they're finished with their renovation, to come up with energy code, you're opening the entire walls up again.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're not going to be able to meet that at this point.
Right.
I don't know. I'd rather, I'd rather require them to...
Well, they did say they considered having a no mow, no fertilizer in the meadow and the vegetation.
That's in here as well.
Yeah.
There were a number of issues with this, as we know. And Roy brought them all up at the hearing, which, you know, I looked at again today.
Terry, do you want to lead sort of a review?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, well, you kind of jumped in.
Go ahead, go ahead, take over.
Yeah, so there were a number of issues, and we were starting to talk about them. There were no permits requested or gotten for any of the work that was done on the house since the home was purchased back in March of 2018. Also with the, in terms of the decking, the applicant took the position that the, the deck was really, well, first he said in kind, replacement of a patio, a concrete patio that had been there decades before. And so that they didn't feel that a variance was even required for that, that they purely need an NRSP for this project. But again, it's all after the fact that they've done, done the work and the decking. And it's very close to the wetlands. Now, they, they did go back based on the meeting. I know Roy was very concerned, we were all concerned about the wetlands. The, the path down to the beach at the end of the property has a section where it's very wide and it's all lawn. And it goes right through the wetlands that are designated on the survey. We did see some GIS photos over time that were, were reviewed, and it almost looks like the, the wetlands in some spots on the property have grown over and increased in size. But we were concerned, I am concerned, that the, in the letter that we got from the agent, after reviewing some of the things we discussed at the applicant, you know, at the hearing about the covenant and the no fertilization, and I was concerned that, and they, they want to file a covenant, they've agreed in their letter that they would file a covenant to no fertilization of the vegetation and limiting mowing to the existing grass lawn and pathway to the beach. I, I...
Four foot wide?
No, no, the existing. And you saw the photos in the thing, it goes out. It was actually, you didn't see it in the photos because they didn't take it. There was a boat like also on the side. I have a problem with, with leaving it just the way it is today and not making it four foot, or was even willing to give it a 10-foot wide, you know, which would mean they would have to revegetate some of the, some of the area.
And then we have the issue of the variance of the deck. Is, they're, they're claiming there was no, there should be a variance.
They've abandoned that. So you think that's a variance?
Yeah, that's right.
They're not challenging the questions to whether or not it was rebuilt or that, whatever. They're requesting the variance, so...
So my question, just before we get into that...
But wait, it doesn't say that they're requesting a variance, though.
Yeah, it does in that letter.
Yeah.
He said that he's no longer pursuing that.
Right, it's the first, second paragraph of the letter.
Initially was going to ask for a determination from the building inspector about that deck being previously there and pre-existing. They've decided in order to try to move the application forward that they're going to withdraw that. So they're asking for that variance.
Well, they're withdrawing that, but does that mean they're asking for the variance? The way I read this, they wanted to just forget about the whole thing.
No, I mean, they're asking for the variance.
Okay, so they're asking for the variance.
They've abandoned seeking no variance from a building.
All right, so they're accepting the planning department and the variances.
My question, my question to this board in our, in our discussion is, does, does the decision we make on this variance affect from a precedent standpoint, what's happening down the road, what happened down the road with Duryez? All right? I don't know if that's a, it's a...
Well, it's a commercial versus a residential.
True, but there was an issue with building a deck over a, of a concrete patio.
All right, well, they're asking for the variance here.
Okay, 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 good point.
Okay, so the variance is 77 feet. In their letter, they also state that the, the distance, that the TAM had said there's no conforming location for the deck, which is true, but they, they kind of took it that there's no better conforming location on the property, which is not true. There was a better, lesser non-conforming location on it. It's 77 feet. It's, it's clearly a lot.
77 percent.
Right, yes. But what bothers me the most, I mean, I could be willing to grant the variance for the deck if we had a little more in the way of getting the, the wetland area and that grassy area that goes down from the deck.
Plus the covenant.
And the covenant. The covenant, yes, that nothing would be, you know, further developed over that deck, on that deck, or above that deck.
Well, I was going to say, it sounds like we would want to strengthen his... Well, I was going to say, it sounds like we would want to strengthen his letter C wording to be more consistent with what we talked about.
Not just enclosing the deck, but any further development on the decking side of the house.
Because that's the planning board's concern with this.
Specifically, they would covenant that any improvements would preclude the deck from becoming living space and extending the roof. I mean, so we're specific.
Now, it's an NRSP also, and that comes into play. The wetlands there have a lot of the invasive Japanese knotweed that was on the property. So I don't know that it's, does that make it a high-quality wetland? I know the knotweed also will be absorbing nitrogen and recharging water and all that. So I think it would be a major detriment to the wetlands to have this deck remain. And work is already done as long as they can protect it from the runoff. And again, I'd like to see more of the wetland that was cleared out and is mown today made into a size of a pathway. I'm suggesting possibly 10 feet wide. Roy mentioned four feet wide. I'd like to hear what your opinions are on that.
My notes said 10 feet narrowing to four feet, so.
Well, it's, we didn't measure it, it was pretty wide to begin with. It may have, I thought it looked like it was more than 10 feet. And then halfway down to where it does narrow down to the beach, it bellies out on either side, and there was even more, you know, it was very wide there. Like I said, there was a boat there that was on a trailer.
Okay. Something that I should have announced before, but I'll just comment on here, is that I know the applicant's agent, I've done business with him in the past, he's represented me in a couple of closings of homes. I have no current dealings with him and do not feel in any way conflicted on this application or any others that he brings in front of me. In fact, I never really even thought about it being an issue, but I just want to say publicly that I do have a relationship with him that I've had over the years where he's represented me in a couple of situations, but I do not feel conflicted, so. So just by way of review, the issue here is the deck. It's 23 feet from the wetlands, and it's a 100-foot requirement, so it's a 77 percent variance request. There was back and forth about whether it was pre-existing, that's no longer in the conversation. The planning department's concerns were about future expansion, not so much about the current deck situation, but whether or not there was additional creep toward the wetlands, a roof over the deck, an enclosure of the deck, that kind of thing toward Member Berger's comments. They have now offered to covenant that they would not fertilize their grass, that they would install leaders and gutters, which apparently do not exist today, and that they would covenant to not enclose the decking, and I just think we would want to increase that. And I just mentioned the whole issue of the IA system. So in the end, I think I am in the same place as Member Berger is. I don't think it necessarily appropriate for us to require them to tear out the deck. So I would like to see if we could improve the environmental conditions on this property to feel good about mitigating as much as we can the current footprint that does exist there with both the house and the deck. Honestly, normally, don't we go with a four-foot-wide pathway on something like this?
Well, but their argument was that it was pre-existing, so.
And they're permitted to do 12,000 feet of clearing.
We have to make sure we have, you know, either an agreed-upon mitigation that they do, otherwise, you know.
Well, you've got to remember that the request asks that the condition has to be tied to, there has to be that nexus between what the condition is and what the variance requests and the relief requested is.
My point, the nexus is very strong here because, again, it ties back to the renovation of the house. It's a pretty strong nexus of why we're requiring and...
And it's the wetland, that basically is...
We have to, we're concerned that the deck isn't there right now, right? They're asking for approval for that deck. I think we would require serious mitigation to approve something like that.
A substantial variance.
Well, in addition to Kim's comments, we just say that a revegetation plan shall be submitted to the planning department.
I think we have to...
I think we have to define what we're allowing, yes.
Further mitigates the clearing that's occurred.
I mean, if it's purely a clearing variance and it's pre-existing, we might decide differently if this all happened today. But the fact that this clearing is right through the deemed wetlands on the survey, what, I think there's a nexus there that they have to improve that regardless of what the clearing calculations are on the property.
Can we figure out what the sort of narrowest point is at the neck of the clearing and just ask that they take that and then taper it down to the walkway that exists today? So it would be, I feel like John.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
You know.
I don't know, I don't have a...
Something like that, where I just draw on it, so it just kind of goes down.
Yeah, see, this right here is where it bellies out, and this is where the boat is, a boat. Nothing here, but it's all grass, so, and all they're agreeing to is to keep the grass mowed and not fertilized.
Well, I would just, even if they, even if we went for a no mow of the current grass and we just got an agreement and some kind of separation, I can live with that as well, as an idea.
Well, they're entitled to a four-foot walkway.
We're going to have a physician on the septic. I don't know what position to take given the circumstances right now.
Well, if they go and they want to do further work.
Before we skip to that, if we could just, Chris Kelly's letter is not entirely clear to me if he's already offering that, because he says he's limiting mowing out to existing grass lawns.
And pathway.
Yeah.
All right, could we maybe initial what you've sketched here?
Can we designate a dimension? I would prefer to designate a dimension.
Maybe we could have our planning department person help us? It's not his application.
Yeah, it's Todd.
Right, it was Brian?
Todd, yeah.
Well, what if we say revegetation in line with the map?
Right, and have them submit a revegetation plan.
October 17, 2018.
You can do it that way.
And what do we want revegetated, the pathway through the wetlands?
Yeah.
Well, the area outside the pathway.
Why don't we say this? Why don't we say a pathway starting at the width of the five contour line, the width of the five contour line tapering down to four foot at the, what are my classes?
Want to mark it in red?
That's a five-foot contour too, how could that be?
Yeah, it's five.
See, this is a five-foot contour, which makes sense. Oh, that's because it does level down down there, right?
It goes downhill in sort of levels. It actually levels off when you get to that narrow part.
So, at the width of the five contour line to the east and four foot at the five contour line to the west.
So maybe asterisks both of those or something.
Want a red pen? Maybe just squiggle it.
So that's that. And that.
And then hash it. Yeah, that works. Well, let me just, this would be path, and this would be re-vedge.
And I think it's highly unfortunate we don't, can't compel them to do a septic system.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that, I wish there was a way. Beth, is there any language? The whole septic situation, is there a way to create language that...
Where does this go, in the file?
Do you want, you could mark it, mark that the hearing dated today? What about making it subject to when, if public water is available, applicant shall revisit the opportunity to install a new IA system?
Well, the problem with that could be ten years down the road.
Oh, when water comes in, nobody's going to follow up and say, we've got to put water in. You know, the only person who would know that is if it's sold property or something that was filed in the covenant.
The likelihood is they're going to have to do other work.
And then we also are asking, the covenant is part of this decision.
Can we include it in the decision in some wording so that in the future, if this applicant comes in front of this board...
They want to request whatever was told to you.
In writing?
In writing.
That's a good...
As a condition of approval, so then it's in the file and referenced, you know, which could be something that the board...
I think that's a good, yeah.
From their engineer?
Yep.
That says that there's a level in the area that would trigger, you know, either variance from board review or would require public water to be brought in.
Okay, so we can condition it on an engineer's report from them regarding the IA septic system? You could word it that way? Okay.
The inability to install an IA...
Whatever it is.
Right.
I mean, that wasn't in the file, it wasn't in the hearing. I knew that.
Sound good? Can we say that any variance request in the future, regardless, would trigger an IA system if public water is installed? Could we write it in that way?
It sounds like a stretch.
It's not really going to work. All right. All right, I'll just try.
Next up is spoken, are we ready for that? Okay, so applicant is spoken. Size and location is 621 acre.
Sure.
Located at 17 Association Road, Wayne Scott, tax number 300-200-03-15.
Guys, just with the mics, just be careful with the paper.
When I sneeze, I already go...
I didn't realize there was some of the wipes.
Okay, let me move the water.
The description, "The reconstruction of approximately 485 linear feet of timber bulkhead and 858 square foot of fixed dock and decking on a parcel of land containing wetlands and surface waters. Application also proposes approximately 130 linear feet of biolog insulation along the shoreline. Relief sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-420 of the town code." And that's, I believe, that all, right.
So this is in Jones, this is...
I got it. Of the town, okay, so relief sought is a natural resource special permit pursuant to 255-420 of the town code.
I'm sorry, I would have...
The zoning district A5, residents AE flood zones, elevation nine foot and 13 foot, ex-flood zone, secret class type two. John, sure.
Did you do the project description?
Yes, I did.
All right, if anyone remembers, not to be redundant, the bulk of this was to restore bulkhead running about 485 linear feet and replace a dock and some decking. During the hearing, they offered to put in a new IA system. They covenanted to not defertilizer on the lawn that runs towards the bulkhead. I have two notes here. One, the covenant should, if we do approve this, that it should be basically in place because there was some concern in the TAM about the revetment and whether there would be sort of bulkhead creep, I guess. Then the other thing that wasn't clear from my notes, and I don't know how it was resolved, was whether we wanted more buffer between the lawn and the bulkhead. Because there's this beautiful big lawn, and then it just ends at the bulkhead. So there was some discussion about asking for 20 feet of buffer. And there was some other discussion that the Georgia Pond Association recommends a 50-foot buffer, but it's not clear where we landed up or whether that was just part of the discussion. It seems like a 20-foot buffer would be reasonable, and it would absorb some of the runoff so that the lawn just doesn't run straight to the bulkhead. And then we also had some further discussion about beefing up the vegetation to the northwest of the boat house. So I'm inclined to let them do the bulkhead with the provision that it's basically, they're replacing, make it clear, they're replacing the bulkhead. And recommend that there be at least a 20-foot buffer between the lawn and the bulkhead.
I don't know if we're recommending it or we're conditioning it.
John, do you have the July 16th letter that...
Yes.
Includes all the things that they've offered to do, including the re-vedge portion? We should get that into the record, I think.
It is part of the record.
It is part of the record.
And that's what I have open here.
Yeah.
What's the date of the...
So I guess I'd like to open the discussion when everyone else thinks about the buffer.
I don't buy a no fertilizer, because they, well, they didn't say no fertilizer, they said organic fertilizer. And I don't sign on to that because even organic fertilizers are adding nitrogen. If you're, my point is if you're trying to keep your lawn green, that's evidence of nitrogen, and it's, I think that's the mission-critical part of Georgia Pond. So I think my field buffer is extremely important here.
Are you, you're okay with them replacing the bulkhead?
Yes.
That entire length?
Yes, I'm fine with it. I know...
I mean, the thing is, it's pre-existing, and, oh, this was confined to just an NRSP.
It's an NRSP, yeah.
Right, so it's pretty difficult to undo what they've done to the property four years ago.
Although the planning department had a lot of test... Although the planning department had a lot of testimony at the hearing. Contrary to that, and I know somebody mentioned the Friends of Georgia Capone. Their, their website shows like they recommend 50-foot buffers. 20-foot buffer really seems to me to be inadequate. I tend to agree with the planning department when justified that, you know, if, there's all this, everything going on about Georgia Capone and the algae blooms and everything else and the quality of it and tend to agree with the planning department that they shouldn't just be replacing all the, the bulkhead. I was disappointed in some of the testimony by Lori and the relief class that they would put in the IA system and the statement I have written in my notes is that they would, it would include the IA system, would not just include the main house, that it would also include the boathouse, which is really a residence today. And, and in the letter, the final letter that came in from the applicant, they withdrew that, they specifically state that it will only cover the, the main house.
Well, I also.
And how big is this buffer that they put on here?
I, I have a question about the IA system because I believe it is, do they already have that IA system as a condition of approval of another application?
No, their application ultimately was gone.
I believe that they're, they're trying to get.
They said they weren't planning on putting it in at this point.
Yeah.
It was a subdivision that they abandoned.
No, no, no.
Oh, after that?
I reviewed it again this afternoon.
Oh, it's the other.
The IA system is already designed, I believe, and they would implement it now as part of.
Yeah, except that the letter indicates they'll implement it within 18 months. And I just felt like now and 18 months was a little different to me.
So they had an application that, they requested building permit from Ann to redevelop the property. They've abandoned the subdivision because it turned out that they couldn't actually do the subdivision they were requesting due to town, to requirements, open space issues. So then they came back in to rebuild, they just needed a building permit from Ann. The neighbor had appealed that quest, that issue to the zoning board, which the board has determined, that's still ongoing litigation right now. As part of that building permit, the sanitary upgrade was part of it. So I guess they, what they were saying was that they will do that regardless of whether or not, however the litigation turns out.
Sanitary upgrade was for all the residences on the property, right?
It was, it was an IA system, I, I mean, I don't have it.
Um, it says installation of the IA septic system can be utilized by the main house on the premises, so it's not clear.
That's what it says in the letter. They're clearly defining it as only the main residence. That's not what was said at the hearing though. I believe it was Lori Wilshire that said that it would include IA to accommodate all structures.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, in the letter, they, they said, no, we're not going to do all structures, we're just doing the main house, that's one thing. And then there was a lot of discussion also about the, the buffering and only beyond the, and the bulkhead being removed only beyond where the boathouse, which is a residence. And they shortened the dock from 40 feet, the dock, 40 to 30 in the, in the letter.
I, I was just going to say, my notes also reflect buildings on the property, so it will have an IA system.
The one IA system services all the buildings.
Right.
It was going to, but now, now they're saying they're only going to do the main house at this point.
Unfortunately worded.
Maybe.
That, if I declare. I can have the agent, that would be intent to.
I mean, maybe in trying to be specific, they were overly, they didn't intend to be exclusive. You have the letter.
I don't know.
I can.
It's B. See the way it's worded?
Well, to me, it's pretty clear. They're saying utilized by the main house.
I mean, Joan wrote this up before, item number C is to covenant against any fertilization of lawn on the property. My feeling is that's inadequate. I think a buffer is much more important.
Well, they're also offering.
Because everything tapers down, everything, it all falls down.
Well, that's, that's the question of whether it's.
And you're never going to be able.
20 feet from the bulkhead or 50 feet?
We're talking about this whole length. Here, they're only talking about re-vedge in this side bit.
Right.
And they said they don't want to do this because they don't want to be their view, but.
But they still could do 10 or 20 feet of buffer.
Not 10, I think it's more than 20.
You know, they, there was, they're non-compliant with, over-cleared by something like 165,000 plus square feet in an HPOD area. And according to planning, the, there's zero compliance with the 50-foot clearing setback. I'm thinking if we're going to approve this and we want a buffer, I would think 50 feet.
Well, you can't comply with 50 feet everywhere, but.
Well, where it can be, can be complied with. Yeah, you can't do it right by the, the pool, I guess, that area, but you can do it all the way across, you know, going north. And further south.
Well, having been at the property, maybe, I mean, all of this is set aside already. There's a significant scenic easement already. I don't feel like we're in the business of redesigning their property, but maybe asking for 20 feet in front of the bulkhead is a reasonable mitigation for runoff from the bulkhead.
Don't forget it is a pre-existing bulkhead.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're, we're talking about replacing in-kind, an existing bulkhead. From an environmental standpoint, the IA system, I think, everything that we've seen related to Georgia Capone is that it's really the IA systems. It's the septic systems that are the most critical. That is being addressed here. I'm just concerned about how mu, how far we can go for an in-place in-kind bulkhead realistically. I do think that the environmental conditions on the property will be better from the standpoint that the bulkhead will not be chemically treated, which the, the suggestion was today's bulkhead that's existing was chemically treated, that's the area in which it was put in place. This would not be. We are getting some additional revegetation. It's not anywhere near what I would want either. We are getting a reduction of the, the dock. And the IA system. So I think the environmental conditions are marginally better and the, the, the bulkhead is marginally better because it's not an old chemically treated system.
And the deck will be better because it's a flow-through deck and it will be shorter.
I'm inclined to think that meets the standards for an in-place replacement of a hardened structure. We pushed on the 20-foot, 50-foot thing at the hearing.
And we got.
And this is what we got.
We got some movement.
Right. And there, there is some difference, and I'm, I'm accepting of Roy's comments, but during the hearing, we talked about organic fertiliz, fertilization. And the offer is no fertilization. So that is.
You think that's enforceable?
No, but it's covenanted.
I don't, what are we doing?
What is enforceable?
What are we doing to improve Georgia Capone by allowing that? That's not forcible. I'm just throwing it out there.
In the previous application, now it was abandoned ultimately because they couldn't do it.
It's clear that.
They had agreed to remove the bulkhead. And do 77,000 square feet of re-vedge and reduce the dock size. Now, the only thing they came back with for this project is to reduce the dock size. The dock's not even there, right?
I think it's remnants of it, isn't it?
It's just remnants, so they're allowed to redo them.
They did say that they were willing to reduce the dock size.
From 40 to 30.
Yeah, from 40 to 30 is what they went with, yeah.
That's what the offer is.
If it was.
I mean, I, you know, the planning department's view on this, which I, I agree with, that as long as it's more important. The views are more important than the environmental concerns, we're going to have these challenges. I just don't know if, based on the history of this board's actions, whether we can deny the bulkhead because we don't have that level of revegetation.
So the planning department's recommendation was to approve only hard picking, only a few of the bulkhead and the house.
Right, and have some pool.
Which is, which is a far cry from what the application is. I don't know.
I think that's a stretch because it's pre-existing.
I agree it's a stretch, I agree it's a stretch. So that's, I would think that would be an unreasonable question. So in our standard to be reasonable. Is it reasonable to ask for a 20-foot buffer?
Or even a 10-foot buffer? Just running along the top of.
This is an NRSP.
Just running along the top of the bulkhead.
It does nothing. I mean, at least on the north of, north side.
When you look, you're talking about all this lawn, when you're talking about this big massive lawn over there.
Is this 12 feet? It says 12. Why, why couldn't we just ask them to extend this? The length of the bulkhead.
There's a lot of nitrogen on this entire lawn. The 10-foot buffer is doing nothing in my opinion.
By all the buffer standards and recommendations, whether you read it in Friends of Georgia Capone or at a FEMA, that the buffer size at 10 feet is, is, may not work. It's not going to do the job. And we've heard that on other applications, also some on Georgia Capone. And the buffers were increased. I would think minimally 30. And they could certainly increase it over on the side where they say they're going to do the smaller buffer. If we don't want to ask for the whole thing.
Any other ideas? So we're, some say no buffer, some say buffer.
So I, we gotta, we probably have to vote here and.
Right.
Make sure we're on the record.
I'm in, I'm in, I'm in favor of approving the bulkhead. I'm in favor of shortening the dock, I'm in favor of, oh, well, we, we had the, let's go down to the points. Am I in favor of, I'm not in favor of doing item C, because I don't think it's enforceable.
But.
Well, but.
But you'd still want the covenant.
It can covenant, it.
But if it's not, if. I, 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 I don't know. Call me a cynic, but I think, I think in a year, they're, they're going to go on a green lawn and they're going to be greening that lawn up and it's, we haven't done anything to improve the quality of Georgia Capone.
So why not?
Secrecy.
Ask.
Secrecy.
And removal of chemically treated bulkhead wood and the vinyl.
The septic takes care of residences that in my guess are not full-time residents. I think it's a great thing. The lawn is a full-year item, it's there all the time. It's giving, putting nitrogen into that pond, whether there's residents there or not. It's a huge problem.
Well, then I'm back to where I started, which is, it seemed like the 20-foot buffer was reasonable. Or at least, I mean, I was at the property and it doesn't seem unreasonable to ask them to extend this. They've already offered to do.
Are you looking for a buffer or a re-vedge, 20 feet and then maintained, or just nomo zone for 20 feet?
I'd be happy with a nomo zone. I think.
Well, that's what they proposed in D.
I would like a buffer.
Where's the item D again?
Like something re-vedge.
Here. What?
Like something re-vedge.
Well, they're all for here, but larger.
They're literally saying it here.
Yeah.
What they, what they say is installation of buffer areas is shown in the annex map.
Right, which is only here.
Right. And then it goes on to say, the areas are proposed to be planted with thus and such, and mowing of these grasses will be allowed twice a year. So why can't we ask that the buffer be extended the length of the bulkhead?
But are they going to mow those grasses that they're putting in the buffer, that they're recommending, the way that reads? West of the boathouse, we.
You kind of cut them back once a year. It's like mowing hay. It grows back.
And then they want twice a year.
Well, what they're proposing on this side, which is whatever this side is, the west, west side is 12, 12 feet.
12 feet. I think that's inadequate. Hey, the other project we had with frag monies removal, didn't they give us a 30-foot buffer? I would think 30 minimally to have some real value to the environment and improve some conditions in Georgia Capone. You know, we may not be able to get the whole thing going across at this point in time. But that buffer 12, 12 feet here, and it's probably not much more than that there, as it say.
Well, what's the nexus from the?
It's a natural resources special permit.
The bulkhead that's already there, is my question. I don't disagree that I would like exactly what you're saying. I'm trying to figure out our nexus from replacing an existing bulkhead, which I believe the history of our board is that we've always agreed to do that.
Well, they're, yeah, that they're allowed to do that.
To requiring that kind of buffer.
I, I mean, I'm not familiar with the other Georgia Capone cases, so it's hard for me to.
Well, I agree that we need to, I'm sorry.
No, it's hard for me to comment on.
It was cited at the hearing that there were nine other situations, not one was denied. I don't know that that's factual, but my general sense is that this board has been allowing.
This bulkhead, it, what was said, testified in, I think Brian even, or, or somebody said it, but it goes back to at least the 70s. So, so, you know, and there is creosote on it. So that is, it, the new bulkhead is definitely improving.
You know, there was, I do have a comma, another note that Lori said, the area on the north side of the boathouse where they're now proposing, well, this is the south side of it, 12 feet. And whatever this footage is, a little bit more than that.
Yep.
That the client agreed to a 30-foot buffer and re-vedge. Is this 30 feet?
Can't tell.
Now, that's not stated in the letter that we ultimately got from the agent. So there, there are a number of things they said at the hearing that I don't see covered in the letter, but.
So the board said, as it is. As Terry's been saying, is, the, the, they are requesting relief from you because it's, while it is pre-existing, it's not something that they can just put in again, or just get a building permit and put in. They do need relief from this board. So if based on the standards set forth in the natural resources special permit section, if, if there needs to be mitigation to offset any of those standards, that's what the board is looking at.
Correct.
So they are requesting relief from you. So it's, while it is pre-existing, that's all, that's a consideration. But it's not an automatic. You know, the board is allowed to put in conditions as long as it's tied to what the applicant is requesting.
That's correct.
And they're requesting an NRSP there in an HPOD area. To me, it's not unreasonable at all as for the. To me, it's not unreasonable at all as for the thirty-foot buffer.
Well, maybe rather than. See, I hate to, I feel like we're not in the business of designing, but maybe we could say we would like to see more, an offer of more buffering and, and revegetation along the bulkhead.
And we're not in the business of designing.
Yeah, I think we gotta decide that based on what they've submitted to us right now.
Co-compliance, as much as possible.
We tried this whole discussion.
But I think, I think if they've offered this up to the west side, I think, I think John brought it up before, let's have them continuing it along the rest of the, of the thing, it can be the same wording, the same buffer. I think it's important to have a buffer across, of an NRSP standpoint, apparently.
So our position would be to approve with a revegetated buffer equal to what, what dimension? The continuation of the twelve-foot proposed?
Of the twelve, of the proposed, because this is already existing, the total, the total, the total, Ben.
Total of the, of the dark green and the light and the lights?
Correct.
The length of the.
Tie of bulkhead.
Bulkhead.
I mean, even this is twenty feet away.
So I just want to be clear, it's not this dimension, it's this dimension.
That's correct.
So it's whatever that greater dimension is.
That's correct.
With possibly the exception of the area by the brick wall, because otherwise the twenty feet would be running into their swimming pool.
Right, they, they can work that out, they can work that out.
So exempting out the area of the brick wall in front of the house.
So, Roy, do you want to take a red pen and do that on that?
Well, why don't we, can we pick a dimension?
We can have them, well, and have them submit a plan.
Submit the buffer plan with the news, with the survey.
Okay, are we four-oh on that?
Yeah, they get that.
And we can do some easier ones now?
Tepidino's next on the list.
Tepidino.
Oh, I need to vacate for that.
Are we ready to talk about that?
Can we do this, can we do this next week?
I, I think this was John's, I mean, I think, I think we need John here.
Tell him, we have to.
What's our time?
July twenty-third.
Is that when the hearing closed?
Oh, no, the hearing was July twenty-third, but we closed it that night.
I have the picture of that night.
Yeah, it's September twenty-third.
And today is the tenth.
Do we all recall, I mean, we can attempt to do it, I don't mind making a decision. I, I mean, I had, my mind made up on it, you know, but.
We're recused.
You're recused.
John looking into it again.
I think he looked, I think he checked out the survey, checked out, I think he went.
He got, he got a updated survey from, from Ty.
Except for, I don't know, that one bearing.
He wanted to do on his back sheet, because he didn't want to.
But he did that, he did that, he submitted this to the record, yeah.
But he didn't open a week for it?
Yes, he did.
That's what I thought, so that's, and it's on, it's on table.
So we can, we can probably make that decision next week.
So we bring us to seven-thirty.
For one week.
Seven-thirty was the date of the record closed. It was only because we thought there was some sort of typo with one of the variances.
The variance has changed, and they weren't reflected on the survey, so we've got to be updated every Tuesday.
Okay, are you ready on Sol? We, John recused himself on that one anyway, so I'd have to be mine.
The most current is June twentieth survey.
You want that?
I don't.
Oh, is that one?
Yeah, it's turned in, it's turned in, but I think that's.
I have it here.
God, it's not nice.
They shall read it in. The application is Sol. The size and location is thirty-three thousand four hundred and six square feet, located at two oh five Marine Boulevard, Beach Hampton, Section Five, Block Thirty-three, blocks twenty-two, twenty-five, MAP seventeen sixty-three, Amagansett, Subjectas Map Number three hundred dash one seventy-six dash zero eight dash twenty-six. The description, to demolish the existing accessory building and decking, and to construct a new five hundred and seventy-eight square foot addition to the existing residence, with new swimming pool, decking stairs, and upgraded sanitary system, new propane tanks, retaining walls, and new driveway, within jurisdiction of Seppax Dunes and Dune Land. Relief sought three variances under Natural Resources Special Permits pursuant to two fifty-five four twenty of the East Hampton Town Code required for this application. Variance of, variances of twenty-one point three and thirty-five point eight feet from two fifty-five four forty of the Town Code are required to construct the addition seventy-eight point seven feet and decking stairs sixty-four point two from the dune crest where a hundred foot step acts are required. One variance from two fifty-five eleven sixty-seven A, eight of the Town Code is required to allow the hallway connecting the existing residence with the addition to be constructed less than half as wide as it is long, and any other relief necessary. Zoning District B, Resident B E, Velocity Flood Zone Seventeen, and a secret class since type two. Again, and if you recall, we have Marine Boulevard. We have an existing accessory structure that they are to the east of the property that is located, east of the property.
Kind of north, right?
Yeah, north, northeast, that's right. And right now, it's an art studio, so they're proposing to re, uh, tear that down, um, and build a new, um, two-bedroom addition, connecting it to the main house, and with a hallway that, a long hallway that will connect the two structures. The hallway is one of the variances being sought because, as far as that connection. If the additions, all the additions will be done in already, um, cleared and disturbed areas. There is no additional work being proposed on the existing house, and if you remember, we were questioning whether or not, if there were additions going to the house, whether this house would then kick into having to go apply fully with FEMA.
I have in my notes that they were gonna add new septic.
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Add leaders and gutters.
Yes, I got it there. The front of the house is eighty foot from the dune crest, all the remaining structures that they're adding is landward of that, and so a very small part of that hallway is required to have a dune crest setback, and the other variance would be to, uh, one of the other variances, the length of the, of the hallway. They are planning to do an IA system, leaders and gutters. The addition, the net addition, additional structure on the, on the property is a hundred and seventy-eight feet, taking away the existing structure. And they are proposing a fifteen thousand seven hundred square foot easement on the property, which is quite a large easement, and I think.
Fifty feet.
Yeah. Proposed, um, the proposed addition is completely FEMA compliant. And then we had conversations, okay, so first, before I get there, one of the things that, you know, I'm gonna be recommending approval of this application, but I will say that, um, that, one of the negative parts about this thing is, this is not a house that's being, that we're retreating from the main dune, or the dune. The deck, existing deck is cut into the dune, actually, so that was a concern of ours, and we brought that up at the hearing, so they are willing to cut the deck back.
They're willing to square, I have to square off the deck?
No, they're retreating four point one feet and squaring the deck.
Right, they're gonna cut off this part that's.
And your recommendation was, your recommendation was, you'd like to see a third, if you recall.
Well, I, I think we, I, I thought that we arrived at.
A compromise.
Squaring it from here.
Okay, we did, right?
Yeah, it was like four and a half feet.
And we were removing the stairs.
And they were, they were gonna do that to begin with. They're removing the stairs.
So it was like a four-foot, one, four, four feet, uh, retreat.
Right.
They are willing to covenant that the new addition, um, will not be used, cannot be, um, one of the.
It's the hallway. It would not be used for living space or a kitchen.
I don't know how the, the hallway could legally be used to do that.
It can't be legal, but they're willing to covenant that they won't.
The addition will not be used.
As living space.
As, they will not see to use. They will not, as a separate living space, meaning they won't speak to a kitchen permit for. There must be a better way to articulate it.
What is the survey, no, it's the hallway they were addressing.
It's illegal anyway, there's no, there's no provision in, in the code anyway, so.
You can't have two kitchens in one house.
Unless, unless we get a covenant on it, and if the Town Code ever does allow, it's covenant, no?
If I may.
I, I found the covenant to be kind of moot, that's what I found, it didn't have any fight, it's fine.
Okay, they're asking for three variances, twenty-one point three feet for the addition from the dune crest, sixty-four point two feet for the decking and the stairs, the third variance is to allow the hallway, connecting the existing with the new addition, to be less than half as wide as it is long.
That's correct.
And that's what they were going to covenant, that they also would not turn it into living space.
Well, I don't know how you cut legally anyway, it's fine, if they want to do it.
I don't know if you can say it's not living, it is living space.
Roy, can I look that up real quick?
It's part of the living space as far as.
Not be expanded, maybe, maybe not be expanded.
What is the survey that we're using for this, I'm not sure of what I'm looking at?
It's the June twentieth.
She's more than, she's more than willing to provide a covenant on it, so.
I'm about to cut off.
What if in the future, they took that hallway and wanted to expand it in width to allow more living space?
Well, they didn't do that because it would have required some of the variance from the dune crest, I believe, was involved in it, and that's why they didn't do it.
You, you want it to be used for sleeping purposes.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, and that's what they were willing to say, me too. I too am in favor of the application, I don't think the variance has changed as a result of the hearing, um, and a good part of the NRSP, my approval on that is because they did, they're gonna remove the stairs off the existing deck, and cut back that, the existing deck on the south side of the house, um, so that the dune crest is now, will be freed up from any encumbrances, and just be allowed to normalize itself.
An easement is a very substantial.
And the easement is huge, yes, it's fifteen thousand seven hundred feet.
The only thing I have to add, and I, I have the sketch that we had made, if you want me to give it to you back, that they're, in place of the stair that they're removing, they're going to have a sand path from that point.
Right, they're gonna, they're gonna meet the.
Or the line.
The, yeah.
Right, okay.
Sand path, that's right.
Do you want this sketch?
Nope, that's good.
Can I, can I see that sketch?
Yeah, this, it's the squiggly line.
Right, okay, so.
That squares off the deck. I'm not quite sure why I have it, it probably should be in the file.
Why is it?
I just think we should make sure.
Okay, it's following the dune crest line, is that what they're doing?
Well, I think we were horsestriding at that point, but, um, I, I think it was, this is where we got the four point one foot, so we should make sure that we're referencing whatever, this is the.
You wanna mark it in red?
Well, it's just, we can hand it in, or just document that it's from that particular schematic, it wasn't on the survey.
Well, they're gonna have to submit a new survey, right?
Yeah, you want them to submit, because that will get lost, and then twenty years down the line, no one's gonna find that sketch.
So they need to provide a new survey based on that information as a condition of getting a permit.
Okay, go ahead and give it back.
Yeah, I'm also in agreement with my fellow board members on this.
So, we concur, subject to getting that new survey.
Yeah.
Do you want to attack, do we want to attack Kapinski, is a, a gun?
That was left open thirty days, so.
You wanna wait?
August seventeen oh six.
Didn't we have Geller? Geller, we did already.
We did, we already did.
So I would say, maybe we wait for him to come back, or?
For Kapinski?
Um, I'm ready if we want to go, or we.
I'm comfortable doing Kapinski, they, they submitted a new thing with the reconfigured pool, I'm not sure what else we wanted them to do.
Okay, so let's read it in, go for it.
I mean, I have the letter, I'm going with the letter of August twenty-seventh?
I have to read it in now.
Okay.
So the applicant is Kapinski, size, location is ten thousand square foot at thirty Devon Road, Beach Hampton, Section One MAX, twelve oh three Amagansett, Subjectas Map Number three hundred dash one seventy-four dash zero four dash eleven. The description, to construct a swimming pool with decking, and to allow existing decking, a stone wall, wooden fence, propane tanks, and generator, and two hundred ninety-six square feet of clearing, all established without the benefit of an NRSP, to remain on a parcel containing dune land and beach vegetation. Relief sought a Natural Resources Special Permit pursuant to two fifty-five four twenty of the Town Code. Zoning District B, Resident Zonex Flood Zone, Secret Class since type two. Tim, you want to go for it?
Sure. So this is Devon Road, which is in the Amagansett Dunes, and the applicants are looking to construct a swimming pool with decking, also to allow existing decking, a stone wall, wooden fence, propane tanks, generator, and two hundred ninety-six square foot of clearing. They need an NRSP. Quite a bit of conversation at the hearing about a prior application that was denied June fifth, two thousand thirteen, which also was pool and decking. The planning department's view was that this was a better application as submitted than that prior one. We quickly locked in, if you remember, board members, to the terrain of this property. If you recall, to the south, the property drops off dramatically. If you recall, to the south, the property drops off dramatically. That's where the pool was being proposed. The pool was kind of set back from the dwelling and then running perpendicular. We had a conversation that evening, and as a result of that, we then received a revised proposal dated August 27th, where the pool was rotated to kind of be lined up with the, with the, with the house, to eliminate a good bit of the disturbance that we were concerned about to the south of the property. The pool's now proposed to be 34.9 feet from the southern property line. In addition, the clearing and coverage, as a result of this, has been reduced by 324 square feet and 201 square foot, respectively. And as in the prior application, both, well, I think the hot tub was being removed, but now the decking is being removed as well. So the total coverage on the lot is being reduced by 63 square foot, even after all of this. The current, or the new proposed pool will not extend any further south from the existing improvements on the property. There was also a note with regard to vegetation, because we had asked about the vegetation. It clearly didn't look terribly natural to us, but the indication was that after reviewing with the plan department, that the removal of any vegetation outside of the work envelope would serve no viable purpose and was not recommended. There's also revegetation being proposed. Help me with where that is.
There's a, just above where it says pool profile, there's a note, "All areas disturbed by construction to be revegetated with Cape American Beechgrass."
Oh, yep, yep, yep.
And the squiggly line is what, the clearing line?
Of 318 inches on center.
Or is disturbed by construction.
It also says, uh, it's not written down, I guess, I would be in favor of approving the proposal as presented in the August 27th letter, with the exception that because it's not clear what they're revegetating, that the planning department reviewed the revegetation I mean, the squiggly lines, I can't tell if that's construction lines or squiggly.
No, the squiggly lines are revegelines.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we should certainly condition it on the planning department approving the revegetation plan. And I'm in agreement with that. I think the applicant has, the application as proposed on August 27th meets our standards. And we've done a decent job here of trying to protect that dune, and we reoriented it, and I kind of feel like this is a little bit of a win-win now, the way it's designed.
All right, it's to the credit of the applicant for coming back with this.
Correct, correct.
Well, you know, I don't agree enthusiastically with that, but.
Go ahead.
No, which is, you know, I ultimately will approve it because of the revegetation. I was concerned about the, the history on this, as we know, was kind of weird.
Dicey.
Yeah, very dicey, and modifications subsequent to a lot of the other projects that were put in, and going back to a previous determination where, at a subdivision and modification of the property in general, this larger lot, a larger lot historically, was broken down into two other lots, and there was an agreement that on the southern boundary of this, that nothing would be built for 50, I think it was 50 feet, or 55 feet, from the southern boundary, and this clearly approached as the other items that they already had put in place, and also without permits, I believe. Now, in a subsequent, the testimony of the planner at the time, that we were concerned about a 25-foot setback from that, and the planner, there was a project where I guess the previous permit or determination had allowed that 55 to drop to a 25. And I see on this proposed pool now that they termed it, it's 34.9. So I will approve it. As far as the NRSP, I have concerns. I don't understand in the letter, the existing vegetation located on the dune. I guess this is Joel Halsey that sent the letter, visited the property, and appears all vegetation within this area is native. So I'm kind of confused as to why the planning department, removal of vegetation would serve no viable purpose outside of the work envelope, so.
Yeah, I don't claim to be an expert on that. The, some of the plantings there did not appear to me to be native, but.
Well, he says they are, but if they're going to revegetate and it requires the approval of the planning department, I will accept that. It'll be revegetated with all appropriate plantings.
Yeah, that wasn't exactly much, because they're representing that it's not, it's okay with the planning department, but we don't know.
Right, no, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
Okay, so we're 4-0 on that.
Hang on a second. They were still, they changed the variances, right? On, that they were looking, do we know? Then we would know. Wasn't there, oh, this wasn't just an NRSP, was it?
It was, yeah, it was an NRSP.
It was an NRSP, okay. Never mind.
Yep, yep.
No variances.
Three variances.
Well, we're talking about the old, the last one.
Oh, the last one, I'm sorry. All right, so next is, the applicant is Wanzelak. Size and location, 2823 square foot. That's his house size, if we look at. Located at 826 East End Drive, Unit 826, MAP number 80, Montauk Shores Condominium, Unit 826, Montauk Sub-Tax Map number 300-321-01-26. The description, to replace existing 500 square foot manufactured home and decking with a new 925 square foot manufactured home. A new decking and to relocate an existing 63 square foot shed on a parcel with 150 foot within 150 foot of freshwater wetlands. The relief sought a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-420, and three variances from 255-430, wetland setbacks, an 82.4 foot, an 83.9 foot, and 70 foot variances are required to respective, respectively relocate a shed, install a mobile home and a deck, 17.6 feet, 16.1 foot, and 30 feet from freshwater wetlands where a minimum 100 foot setback is required. Three variances of 26.3, 15, and 8 from 255-1110 of the town code are required to shed to be located 3.7, deck 15, and mobile home 22 from the front yard line where 30 foot setbacks are required, and any other relief necessary. Zoning District is RS, Resort, Zone X Flood Zone, and the Secret Class is Type 2.
I just want to clarify with this one, this is only for the shed.
This is for the shed.
He's already had the other approvals.
Yeah, well, I was gonna get into that. I'll get into that, okay.
But it was basically renoted.
I think we just dragged out the old notice.
Yes, so I don't, the board doesn't need to discuss any.
So what do we have? Two variances.
Just the shed.
Just the shed.
For the shed.
The front yard variance, the wetland variance for the shed.
He's already got the wetland.
It's just three front yard.
Three front yard variances.
And we already have John's sketch on file.
We did a shed.
I have, you want me to get into it? Wrap this one up.
So three variances for the shed to be located 3.7, the deck 15, mobile home 22.
15 and mobile home 22 from the front yard.
All the other ones, he has all wetland variances, he doesn't need that.
Okay, so this was a hearing that we originally had on this project, as we just mentioned, back, I think it was two years ago, maybe?
December 2017.
Okay, two years ago, almost. So, anyway, everything had been approved, and then it was discovered that the north road here is DeForest Road, and even though it's almost like a private, a dirt road at this area, that it required front yard variances, which were left off the original application. So this was re-noted, and for discussion about the front yard variances as read in, the deck, the mobile home itself, and the deck. And the applicant wanted us to decide where we were happy with, or would be okay with putting the shed because of the front yard variances. So we had many discussions about it. This part of DeForest Road is already totally like buffered off with native vegetation. You can't see anything, you can't see anything on this property from the road. So we did take a survey that was dated August 10th, 2016, and we hand wrote on it and drew in this little diagram, as to a location where the deck could go. And the original shed location further on that survey seems 3.7 feet. Effectively, this, the location we drew on here is maybe a little bit larger, but effectively the same. So I'm looking to approve these three front yard variances, and the applicant is going to get a copy of this hour signed drawing that we signed in on August 20th, 2019, and he has to provide a new survey showing that, right?
I didn't see the picture, but we can get him a copy.
Okay.
Oh, he has a copy of this, right? Okay. And then he has to provide a new survey showing that.
I concur with the drawing.
Same here.
Same here.
We should say the planning department was impartial to this, I took note of that language. And this is the Montauk.
Montauk Shores?
Yeah, Shores, which is the mobile home park. So we're talking about very, very small lots in there, so. All right, thank you, Terry.
Another shed case.
Yep. This one's mine.
Applicant is Brecker. Size, location is 19,457, located at 18 Montauk Avenue, this is the one we got confused, it said Montauk. Montauk Avenue, Montauk Gardens, MAP number 480, Lot 73 and 80 at PO 4th Street. East Hampton, Tax Map number 300-116-03-7.4. The description, to allow an existing shed to remain within side yard lines setbacks and outside of the town's pyramid regulations. Relief sought, one variance of 7.3 is required from 255-1110, Table 3 of the town code to allow an existing shed to remain 2.7 from feet from the eastern side yard lot line where a 10-foot setback is required. One variance of approximately 5 foot is required from 255-1172D of the town code to allow an existing shed to remain 5 foot outside of town's pyramid regulations and any other relief necessary. Zoning District is B Resident Zone, X Flood Type, is X Flood Zone, Secret Class Type 2.
Okay, so, Montauk Avenue is located off of Hans Creek Road in East Hampton. I would describe Montauk Avenue as an area with scot, rolling wooded terrain out there. This is also in a water recharge overlay district. The issue in front of us is the location of a shed, which is located 3.2 feet from the eastern property line. You recall, we had photographs that both I presented as well as the planning department, which are in our file, that show just how close that shed is to the property line. The property's cleared right up to the max, 9,976 square feet is cleared, and 10,000 is allowable. Previously had been over-cleared, and there was also identified in this application some issues with some of the leaf litter being blown off in some of the areas that are supposed to be revegetated. We heard from the applicant on that. The shed is located in one of the designated areas to be revegetated, and I think, given the circumstances of the property, I don't have such a big deal with that in and of The shed is very close to the property line, there's no real screening between the shed and the neighboring property. There's a fence that runs along the property line. There's really no room to put any screening or buffering between the current shed and the line. I would note that the shed is a movable structure, and that there are trees around the shed, but that, in my view, that the shed could be relocated to a conforming location without an awful lot of difficulty. At the most, I would say there would be minimal disruption, maybe some cutting, some minor things around it, but very little. And as a result of that, I have a hard time saying that this meets our variance standards. I think that the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method that's very feasible. There was no testimony that moving the shed was going to cost an exorbitant amount of money, merely, I think, was kind of indicated that it was inconvenient. It is a substantial variance request, it's 68 percent. It's clearly self-created. And so, I just, I just can't bring myself to approve this. It's a very small shed, it's a very small matter, but to me, the remedy is to just move it to a conforming location, and specifically, I would say, you know, they've got the pool equipment right there that's very close to where the shed is now, and they could move that shed to block the pool equipment, and it would create a better space. The applicant did indicate that they had spoken to their neighbor, their neighbor didn't have any problem with the shed location, but of course, any decision we make runs with the property, so even if that neighbor is okay with the location of it today, I think we owe it to the community to make people put things in the right place. And in this case, I think it's a movable structure, so I just don't think it meets the standards.
Okay. Well, I agree. I was going to deny it, but on the same basis, when we did look at the photos and the applicant's, the applicant was testifying, it did look as though the shed could get between some of the existing trees without having to clear any other property, and the shed could be moved over into a conforming, a completely conforming location somewhere else on the property, so it's not the minimum variance required. And it was also kind of a substantial five-foot pyramid regulation variance that the applicant was looking for. And even if the neighbor at this point, as member Brennaman said, has no problem with the shed now, we don't know what the future would hold on that. And since it can be moved, I am also looking to deny this. And since it can be moved, I am also looking to deny this application. The, I don't know if it's relevant then, counsel, the applicant said she would not clear leaf litter going forward?
Well, and that's an enforcement issue that has to be addressed as far as.
Okay, so if we're denying the project, recommended conditions are moved?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I agree with Member Brenneman and the boarder, that the only thing that struck me as so odd is if it's so easy to move, why couldn't they have moved it instead of going all this trouble?
Yes, that.
And so I'm concerned that if we say, oh, go ahead and move it, that somehow we're conditioning it on an assumption that it's easy to move, and I don't know if that's a valid assumption. Maybe it doesn't matter at this point, but.
I feel it's a valid assumption.
It's a home depot-built shed.
On cinder blocks, so it's not permanently structured. And if it turns out that it can't without felling a tree, then they could re-appeal back to us, right, on that?
Yeah, with the cost of what it would cost to remove it, and maybe some other mitigation measures, but as presented.
They can avoid the variances, okay?
Okay.
Board members, I'm going to suggest we put off subpoenas, that's a pretty complicated one and involved, so.
Oh, I was going to say, why don't we decide subpoenas from the Sajids, because they both raised singular issues.
I'm just not ready, I'm personally not ready to discuss it.
But we just heard these.
We should discuss them both at the same time, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just heard these on August twentieth, so we still have plenty of time on these. I think, well, never mind. I don't think I'm allowed to say what I.
But that, does somebody want to handle the minutes, and I think we can probably do them all at once.
Yes, I have reviewed the minutes of July thirtieth, August sixth, August thirteenth, and August twentieth, and would move to approve the minutes for each of those dates.
Second, then.
Concur.
Concur. We have resolutions.
I have some essential time for it. It's pretty standard.
Yeah. East Hampton with the Tims. I'll have a little Miss Ryan. And then Terry does Montauk.
Montauk.
Is the secret?
Stay tuned.
Okay, so this is for Fifteen Crooked Highway, and the applicant is Hampton's Cowboys LLC. Suffolk County Tax Map three-hundred-dash-one-one-two-dash-one-dash-two-point-five. This is an extension of time for a determination from two thousand and thirteen, where the board approved an NRSP, and it was related to a revision to the size of the proposed residence from ten thousand two-hundred-and-sixty square feet to seven thousand six-hundred-and-seventy-eight square foot, and also revised the size of the swimming pool from thirteen hundred square feet to eight hundred square feet, and eliminated a two-hundred-square-foot cabana. So it's an extension of time from two thousand and thirteen approval of an NRSP, and substantial reduction in the size of the project, so I would make a motion that we approve the extension of time for Fifteen Crooked Highway, Hampton's Cowboy LLC, East Hampton.
Second.
Concur.
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 Okay, next one is Henry Proto. This was a determination originally filed on the one-second of two thousand and sixteen for an NRSP in variances to construct a twenty-three-thirty-six square foot decking house, sanitary system driveway. It was for a house, that word was left out. Decking, sanitary system, driveway, and land clearing on a parcel containing freshwater wetlands. The applicant is looking for an extension of time in order to obtain a permit. Did he, it's, they have the permit, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they must have, because they put up a big house, yeah, okay, all right. So to obtain a, maintain the permit and obtain a certificate of occupancy no later than eighteen months from the date of the issuance of the building permit. On the matter of Henry Proto, eight-thirty-five Montauk Highway, tax map in Montauk, tax map fifty-two, is that right? Fifty-two-dash-one-dash-ten-dot-three, make a motion to approve the extension of time.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Yeah, we left out the three-hundred, it's three-hundred-dash-fifty-two.
Three-hundred, oh, I won't write on it?
No, I'll, I'll.
All right, and this one is, applicant is Patrick O'Brien, is Seventy-One Dunes Lane, Amagansett Suffolk Tax Map Number one-twenty-nine-dash-two-dash-twenty-one-point-three. It's an application to, the determination was in July two thousand and seventeen, and the board approved the Natural Resources Special Permit in variances to construct a basement, renovate, and elevate existing fifty-six-hundred-seventy-four-square-foot house, and upgrade the sanitary system on a parcel of land with dunes and beaches. They're asking for an extension time to obtain the building permit and certificate of occupancy, I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Okay, we have resolutions from Beth.
I personally have five determinations for the board tonight.
That's way too much.
We have two, both of the Eichners, Lynn Eichner, David and Carol Geller, Stephen Long, and Mark Edwards, and Do Nothing LLC. Do Nothing doesn't have a club, so just be aware of that, and also.
You want to take the clubs?
We don't have any tonight.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, John, just for the boys review?
Yeah, they're not ready yet.
Okay, good.
Just be aware, John's name is on the back of these, however, obviously, he's not here, so I will be amending them to remove that after you guys decide, so it'll be decided sooner. It'll be recorded without his name.
Do Nothing.
They're all mine.
Well, that's me, the rest are yours?
Three of them are mine, the Eichners and Geller are mine.
Well, and Edwards. Is he second? Geller?
Oh, I see. Oh, I see.
Nice, Tim, you want to handle yours, and we'll go this way.
Want me to, oh, sure, sorry. So I have Stephen Long and Mark Edwards, and board members, you'll remember that this was the two properties on Maple Lane and Spring Close Highway where we approved the carving out of about a tenth of an acre on one property to add to another. And the entire board concurred with the approval. So in the matter of Stephen Long and Mark Edwards, Suffolk County Tax Map three-hundred-dash-one-six-five-dash-five-dash-nineteen, and three-hundred-dash-one-six-six-dash-five-dash-eleven, I make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Concur.
Concur. I think you're up.
Okay. I'm checking something.
We're going left and right.
Okay, we're going, all right, I like that. Okay, so this one is in the matter of David and Carol Geller, tax map three-hundred-dash-twenty-nine-dash-zero-one-dash-nineteen-dot-one-zero. And the applicant's location is at thirty-five North Surfside Avenue in Montauk. And if you recall, this one, it was to demolish some existing decking and construct a second-story addition with a first-story garage below, and some new second-story decking, and on the front of the house, some more first-story decking, and to rearrange the driveway within setbacks and jurisdiction wetlands and freshwater wetlands. This was a unanimous approval. And if you recall, this is the house that had gravel on all sides, and they are revegetating with grasses, native grasses, all of that, removing all of the gravel around the house except for the part that will be the driveway. And this was also unique in that the construction to add the addition is, this is an upside-down house where the kitchen is up on the second floor, and in order to, this was approved in order to avoid major reconstruction of the entire second floor of the house and the kitchen. So I make a motion to approve this application.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
And next we have Lynn Eichner, tax map three-hundred-dash-nineteen-dash-eight-dash-fifteen-and-sixteen. And this is located at, this is the one, there are two here. What's the address? Forty-nine and fifty-five Fairview Avenue.
It's the one that's thick and bald.
Yeah, so this is a lot that, it's two lots right now, will be combined into one lot. And so construct a thirteen-hundred-eight square foot, two-story residence with cellarware, window wells, sanitary system, and driveway on a parcel of land within town's jurisdiction of wetlands. Several variances required, and an NRSP. Ultimately, this was, there is a huge scenic easement that the applicant is going to provide in order to get this. This was a unanimous decision, and all members of the board concurred. In the matter of Lynn Eichner, make a motion to approve this application.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Okay, the other one is also Lynn Eichner, tax map three-hundred-dash-nineteen-dash-eight-dash-fourteen-dot-one. This is located at thirty-nine Fairview Avenue, and is a smaller lot. The purpose is to construct a two-story thirteen-hundred-eight square foot residence with cellarware, window wells, sanitary system, and driveway on a parcel of land within town's jurisdiction of wetlands. And this is pretty much a mirror image of the other one, the property is smaller, but also includes a large scenic easement, and this is also a unanimous approval by the board, and make a motion to approve this application.
Second.
Concur.
Concur. And then this one. The applicant is Do Nothing LLC, Suffolk Tax Map Number three-hundred-dash-one-seventy-eight-dash-one-dash-five, located in fifty-seven Marine Boulevard, Amagansett. And this one was to construct second-floor additions, second-floor decking, and an upgraded sanitary system on a parcel of land containing freshwater wetlands, it was a Natural Resources Special Permit. And if you recall, it was a point-nine-foot variance to construct second-floor addition, ninety-nine-point-one from freshwater wetlands where a hundred-foot is setback required. So a minor, very minor variance, we all concurred, I'd make a motion to approve this application.
Second. I concur.
Her.
Put Joan, Joan seconded it, Joan, put Joan. And I concur.
Mr. Camp, one more.
What is this, one more?
Just number.
Yeah, so this is the determination of the Tuttle Association, Tuttle Road Association. And we all have reviewed this, and so I'm going to pass this on to Member Burger.
Oh, this is mine. All right, this was an appeal by the Tuttle Road Association on appeal of a determination of Prince Building Inspector, CFO, and this is, wait a minute. The counsel?
No, no, you can't, we have to go back to them, but they had the address wrong.
Okay, the address.
We'll adopt it.
We could adopt it, oh, okay, all right. So this property location is a tax map three-hundred-dash-zero-one-six-dash-zero-one-dash-eight-dot-one and eight-dot-two. And this is an appeal, as we know, that the Tuttle Association, Neighborhood Association, in the matter of the CFO issued in conjunction with a pending court case, and the board reviewed it, and we have unanimously.
Upheld.
I upheld the appeal of the Neighborhood Association this manner, and make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Concur.
The language was correct. We have to, you guys correctly trying to write on this?
Do you have that in Word?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so then.
I'll forward it to you in Word. I actually have the copy that I, he didn't pick up on it, but the one I sent him, which I'll forward you, had the corrected information on it.
Okay.
So we have to, it's like. I think that's it, am I going to pass that stuff to you now?
Yeah, so Mr. Vice Chairman, at eight-thirty-six PM on September tenth, I make a motion that we close the meeting of the East Hampton Zoning Board's Appeals.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Wow, that was, that was big.